Are you okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Is your thing?
I bit my tongue.
Everybody.
Good food, you know, I'm starving.
Hey Lisa. So I've got, we're waiting for Carl to call in. Maggie's here. Nice background rose.
Thanks.
I thought about doing that too, but I didn't. Next time.
Lisa, Deaton, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm clicking on the start video, but it's not activating. Do I need to do something different?
I shouldn't have to. Steve, you clicked up in your upper right-hand corner. And then there should be like three dots and a dropdown that says start video.
Yeah, I've got the start video. It's actually in the lower left on this one. I'm clicking on it. And it says cannot start the video failed for some reason.
I don't see a reason why. Let me think. It says your videos off when I click on. Where'd you go? When I click on, I'm asking you to start your video right now. But it's not telling you anything.
It just says cannot start the video for some reason.
Councilmember Kennedy, you may want to exit and restart the meeting if you can. And since we're waiting on councilmember Richards, let's go ahead and try and do that right now if you don't mind.
I'll get off.
Oh, okay. I think this is Carl. Carl, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, just checking.
Let me ask you a question. If, if I take my phone off the charger and walk to the kitchen with my phone. Am I still live? Is it still going? Or would I be disconnecting?
No, you should still be connected.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, I can see you now, Steve.
Can you hear me too?
Yep.
Great, everybody. We're a couple of minutes behind here, so I'm going to go ahead and get us started. At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for April 13th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Kind of state to America.
And to the republic.
To the republic which it stands.
One nation.
Visible. Justice for all.
Okay, great job, everybody. Let's take a look at the roll call this evening. It looks as if everyone's present, like we might be missing Chief Vogel. But Corey's here. So, oh, there he is. Sorry. Yep, sorry, I missed you there. Really quick, let's, I just want to kind of build off of what we were able to do last week. Let's try, if you have video, we will raise our hand to be recognized. Lisa, I know we had a couple of other things we wanted to mention to help just move things along tonight.
Mainly just if you're not speaking, keep your microphone muted for background noise. That's a big thing.
Yep. And if you don't have, you know, like councilmember Richards doesn't have video. Carl, I'll be sure to check in with you as we move through the agenda, okay?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, great. With that being said, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from March 9th, 2020. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See Lisa on. Page four, under the budget area there. Just after the first sentence where councilmember Kurtzwell states that she and councilmember Walton attended a. Pledge of seminar. I think we just need to insert a little bit more there to clear up some of the back and forth that took place there. Last week or two weeks ago. I suggest we put in there that she then discussed the appreciation night. We held in December and said in the past, we have always received checks from vendors that helped with the cost. City manager Zelnick stated, we received a few, but he doesn't recall the checks coming to council. For approval as donations in the previous year. Councilmember Kurtzwell stated that that is how it was done in the past. She stated the reason she is asking is because during the budget seminar. They discussed what are legitimate uses of taxpayer dollars. And an appreciation night or retirement party are not. And then I go on with the budget fund balance there. Also, I think that's it on that one. Sorry. That's all I have.
Ms. Amame, go ahead.
I had a clarification as well. So item number two in the meeting minutes, which is page. I think it starts at page four. And that's when we talked about the ordinance provisions. It's page three, where it's first reading of ordinance to amend Southland Code of Ordinances. So you might recall that I had mistakenly put the wrong section in the agenda note. And when councilmember Kennedy made the motion, he read what I put in there, which was inaccurate. Then later on, we went through a couple of items and then I asked you to reconsider rescind so that we can make that correction. And so what ended up in the meeting minutes on page three, under first reading. It's the second motion that councilmember Kurtzwell made with the corrected. Language. And then later on, on the next page is my highlighting that we have to make this correction. So my suggestion would be to move that substance on page four. Up under item number two on page three. With an explanation also that says that the original motion was made by councilmember Kennedy, supported by. And I can't recall who supported it. Then add my paragraph, the paragraph that says that I pointed out there are these issues, ask for somebody. To make a second to rescind and then we could say councilmember Kurtzwell made a motion to rescind. Approved second motion to approve. And if I can clarify that for Lisa Deaton, if you guys are comfortable with the way I just articulated how we would fix it.
That sounds fine with me.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of minutes, March 2nd, 2020 workshop. Oh, sorry, councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
About a third of the way down, there's, it's the discussion about the, it says the benefit has been closed. The command unit, union still has the people in the original benefit program. The next line states that it's defined benefit program and it actually at that point. Contribution program. Just before councilman Richards. Next line. Do you see what I'm talking about, Lisa?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that you see what I'm talking about.
No, I wrote it down. I'm good.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, there is one on two. Excuse me. On two, it's a, and Kurtzwell stated she hasn't voted for one budget since she's been on the council and the city. Has been fine. Oh, I actually, I guess there is no correction there. That's just her statement. Thank you.
Yeah, you got it wrong.
And just, I know we're all trying to work in different environments here and Glenn, I don't know if it'll help or not. And I know, like a lot of us, myself, I have paper off to the side too. If we can try and talk towards the microphone.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy, you had a hand up earlier.
Yeah, thank you. On the first page, Lisa, about halfway down, the sentence starts out councilmember Kennedy. And it talks about, we're still only about 75%. The way that really should read is we are still only at about 75% of property tax revenue. Compared to 2008 as a result of the decrease in property values during the great recession. At the same time during those 10 to 12 years, wages, equipment and material costs all continued to increase, leaving us with less money. And I had one other one. A small one on the back of page, page two. Where. I say that it starts off, councilman Kennedy stated, this is the same logic people go through when they decide. Take social security at 62, it reads 62 or 72, it should be 62 or 70. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that the additions that Mr. Kennedy is putting in the minutes were actually said on the record.
I can check the video.
Were those actually said on the record or are you just clarifying?
No, that's, that is what I said.
Okay.
That's what she captured as she was writing. There's no video. It doesn't make sense the way it's there. I would have looked a complete thought. So that was the complete thought I put forth.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that what you're putting in the minutes, we don't have documentary evidence. That what you think you should have said, you actually said. That's all I, that's all I'm doing, but that's fine. That's fine. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else with anything on the March 2nd, 2020 workshop minutes? Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I move the minutes of the March 2nd, 2020 workshop as amended.
I'll second.
A motion by councilmember Kurtzwell, seconded by councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion, councilmember Richards?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Please, everyone notice that the attorney bills and the regular bills are all under one here tonight.
The attorney bills are client privileged.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the bills.
I've got a question.
Second, get your motion first. Second.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, we have your second. We will have a discussion. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Okay, where the attorney bills, I said, are to be confidential, okay? I haven't noticed this before. Is this, is this going to continue on from here on in? That all attorney bills are confidential status?
Lisa, go ahead if you'd like to respond.
Yes, and the reason councilmember is, a lot of the information that's contained within the bills are privileged. I give you a lot of detail as to the work that's being done and a lot of that information should be attorney-client privilege. So rather than go through and redact so much of this that it doesn't make any sense anyway. The city manager and I discussed and thought it would be more efficient for the council members to actually be able to see all of that substance. Unfortunately, it's not something that should be shared with the general public unless it's redacted. If anybody from the general public would like to see it, they can submit a FOIA request. At which point we would redact from the document those that are attorney-client privileged.
Okay, that answers my question. I've got two more, three more little questions.
Go ahead.
Regarding bills. Okay. Is Patricia there?
I'm here, Carl.
Okay, Patricia. In two different places. Page one of seven and page. Six of seven, I believe. There's two, okay, I understand there's two separate pay periods involved in this. The March pay period and the April pay period. Okay, there's two checks written to CIB planning. Okay, one for 7,157. And. The other one for 6,413 and 50 cents. Okay? Now. My question is. Have they been billing or not submitting bills during the previous months of the winter here? And this is a recap of bills that they're submitting. At this time that weren't done previously. Exactly. Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure, Carl. And I apologize that there isn't more room in the description line for you to see the whole description. But these are actually two separate months worth of billing. The first one, which was paid on March 12th, was for February fees. Engineering fees and planning consultant fees. And the second set would be, and I get that date in front of me. Dated April 9th, that would be for March 2020, engineering fees, site plan and planning consultant.
Is this, is most of this work that they're billing for regarding the Thomasville matter, okay?
I don't have the bills in front of me, Carl, so I can't answer that tonight, but I can give you more detail on that.
Okay, I, this isn't the place to discuss it, so thank you very much. And I got one more little question on the back pay, the last page on the whole ledger.
Okay.
Okay, the last line. I'm fairly familiar with most of the items that we make expenditures for. Under equipment on the bottom line, it says Granger, I know who that is. What is a mobile beam scale? Do you happen to know what that is? That eludes me. I don't know what that is.
I actually don't know what that is either. I don't know if Doug Varney is available to answer that for you.
Okay, all right.
Can you hear me, Carl?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, it's actually a scale that we had to purchase at the wastewater plant. One of the old school scales that you actually have a slider on and you have to weigh items with. It's what we, we just went like for like with what we had in the building for our polymer scales.
Okay, I'd like to see that sometime and when things are different and we can make arrangements. That's all I've done. That, that purchase of equipment eluded me.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have on bills.
Thank you, councilmember Richards. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Onto the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move to support the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's consent agenda. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
As part.
Councilmember Kennedy, you had your hand up. Did you have anything to add to that discussion?
I was going to second it.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. We do have a proclamation to read this evening. And it is about child abuse prevention and awareness month. Whereas abuse and neglect are suffered by children in our communities regardless of age, race, gender, or economic situation. Whereas one in 10 children will be sexually abused before the age of 18. Whereas this reported malt treatment is only a portion of the overall problem threatening our children. For so many cases go unreported. And today's technology has brought within a new dangerous form of child endangerment, the online predator. Whereas the devastating consequences of physical and emotional abuse of our children affects the community as a whole. And final solutions needs to be attended to by the community as a whole. Whereas Carehouse of Oakland County works to break the cycle of child abuse and neglect. Provides a protective circle of light and hope for a better life. Advocates for the safety and protection of children and partners with community organizations and agencies to offer programs. And services aimed at preventing child abuse. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel LaPeltchett, mayor of South Lyon, county of Oakland, state of Michigan. Do hereby proclaim April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the city of South Lyon. And call on all citizens, community agencies, organizations and businesses to increase their participation in efforts. To prevent the abuse of our children, thereby strengthening and protecting the community in which we live. And with that, this evening. We will open the floor for public comment. Members of the public may speak at a council meeting upon recognition by the mayor. Public comment may only occur during periods designated on the agenda for public comment or a public hearing. A person may speak with the two minutes during each of the two public comment periods on the agenda items or non-agenda items. Waivers of the time requirement may only be granted in discretion of the mayor. And waivers to speak at a time other than the designated comment period may only be granted by the council. Any person wishing to make a presentation longer than two minutes or requiring audiovisual equipment. Is asked to contact the city clerk requesting to appear on a future agenda. I'd also like to add. That while I tend to usually let folks wrap up their, their thoughts on the minutes. Tonight, if we do have anyone here to speak, if we could try and keep it to the two minutes. And if there's something more you need to say, please wait for the second public comment. At that point, if anyone has video and would like to raise their hand to speak, please go ahead and do so now.
David, can you hear me?
I could, I could hear you now, Senator Runstad. Absolutely, go ahead and go ahead.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to talk to the council this evening. I just wanted to let everybody know that we were, as the legislature, asked to extend the emergency order for 70 days. And because this virus is changing on such a fast pace. And we're getting new information literally every day. We extended out the emergency order through the end of the month. At that time, we'll have to review it again and decide whether we are going to, again, extend it. But there's a number of concerns we have about what was passed. It is the strictest stay-at-home order in the nation. And it is a lot of inconsistencies such as you can buy propane, but you can't buy seeds. You can buy marijuana, but you can't buy plants at a florist. You can buy a lot of things that simply are going to intersect you with the public, but you can't, another whole segment. So it just seemed very inconsistent. Also, we now have seen that the governor has passed a provision that you can't even talk to, or walk over and talk to neighbors, even if you're separated. People from out of state can come and go to their second homes up north, but the people within the state of Michigan cannot. So there's so many different things that we think that need to be changed and we're hoping to work with the governor to change those. And I really want everybody listening to feel free to contact my office. We are working seven days a week. I'm taking calls, emails, texts. My office is relentlessly answering people's concerns. So don't hesitate to get in touch with us if you have any questions, concerns. We are going to be there to help you through this.
Thank you, Senator Runstad. We appreciate you being here and reaching out to our community.
Thank you.
At this time, just due to lack of other video presence, we will move ahead and close public comment. At this time, we'll move on to the discussion of downtown and Paul, I'm going to let you take the lead on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we are, as most of you know, most of the downtown businesses are in fact closed. We're trying to work as much as we can with area businesses to provide them financial incentives that we see with. The county, the state and the federal government directing them through our offices and we've notified them through. Our direct contacts, through email, through social media, websites, Facebooks, whatever it may be. As to some of the items that were made available specifically to businesses within our downtown. I'm not sure right now how many of those businesses actually did in fact try to get some of those incentives. But hopefully some of them did take advantage of that and will be receiving some dollars within the future. We're still in the process of hiring our new economic development slash GDA director. We have completed the background checks and have completed the reference checks. We met with the DDA board last week to discuss that particular hire. We will still continue to move forward. I have had email conversations and other discussions with the applicants that we in fact did interview. And all of them understand the, what's actually going on within the environment these days. And that the potential for bringing somebody on very quickly is. Understood by them as not being something that's very likely. We will move forward. We're trying to set a date in which we would make that offer to that individual. But right now, if we did in fact bring somebody on, they would most likely only be in the office one day of the week. And unfortunately not be able to make too much contact with, with the local businesses. But I will be updating you as this process moves along. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the downtown.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I was curious, have you heard anything about the, uh, sale of Draft Street?
No, I have not.
I was curious also about 110 Detroit. Uh, has there been any efforts to try to push the idea of compliance on some of their maintenance standard violations?
Ye- yes, we have. We've had discussions with the Realtor and through, uh, um, individual, um, that was representing or helped representing the DDA board too, because they were interested in that property being in context with the owners. Uh, we have not pushed a lot of the, um, ordinance items recently within the city. Um, we're trying to be as, you know, lean as we, as we possibly can, except for when it's considered health, health, safety, welfare of residents or businesses. We're trying to, uh, work with people as much as possible. Um, but the DDA board, um, uh, members, I know we're still, uh, we're still pushing that as well as I do council's discussion and also the former, uh, economic development slash GDA director. Um, but we do want to get that building to be either in compliance or if they are in fact selling that property, um, that would move forward as well.
Well, I, I, I like the idea of compliance and if they are going to sell it, that's fine. I'm not very comfortable with us just kind of sitting on our hands waiting for them to take action though. Um, these, these ordinances are a deliberate process. We've been, we engaged in them or with them quite a long time ago. And there has simply been no effort to comply to anything. I mean, even getting information back and the response seems to be like pulling teeth. I, I would like to see us moving a little bit more actively towards pushing the, the agenda. That's all I had though. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my comment is directed to the, uh, city manager. Uh, I have been, uh, working round the clock on these, uh, SBA Section 7A loans and, uh, helping my clients, my businesses apply for them. I would hope that the, uh, economic development director that you are proposing to bring into the city at some point has a good background in, uh, these kinds of issues because that seems to be, uh, where the DDA is going to need a lot of help possibly is going to be in funding, whether that's through the, um, uh, whether it's going to be through grants to the state or through these SBA loans. But if you also know of a business in the DDA that is trying to get, uh, a Section 7 loan and has been unsuccessful, uh, I will donate my time to that business and help them as much as I can to help them get that loan. So if you could pass that along, thank you.
I had Councilmember Kennedy and then I'm coming over to you, Councilmember Dil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Paul, just out of curiosity, is the, uh, ordinance, uh, compliance officer still working now?
Yes, he is in a, in a very limited role. He's the one that's been in contact with, uh, our attorney as well as, uh, the property owner or the family of the property owner to try to get compliance regarding, regarding that, uh, property.
Okay, I just, uh, I noticed in the, the last updates, didn't see any, any report included in there from him. And I know he had a number of open cases that, uh, he was pursuing when it was last reported. So I was just curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Dil, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to know if it would be all right if I asked, uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell something from what she stated.
I think, uh, given the situation we're in right here, that that would be fine. Does anyone have a problem with that?
Uh, I just wanted to know if it would be all right, um, to mention your offer to, uh, to others. You know, either in social media or just in passing about, um, assistance with the, with the, uh, loans. Cause I know that there is some that have been struggling.
Lisa, any friend of yours is a friend of mine? Uh, please, I will help anybody who needs the help. I will do whatever I can. In fact, I will pull in Senator Runstad, uh, to, uh, assist on breaking through. And, um, I know Haley Stevens has been absolutely phenomenal about response. Her office has been phenomenal about responding to emails when I've run into a snag or run into that. But, but yes, um, this is critical. We need to get our country back to work. We need to help our DDA. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're more than welcome, Lisa.
Does anyone else have anything for the downtown and Paul or our city attorney? Councilmember.
Uh, Dan, I'd like to say.
One, one moment, Councilmember Richards. I got Councilmember Walton and then I'll come to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Uh, Parks and Rec, I know we've talked many a times about that, uh, parking lot off, off of Dorothy Street and it's being looked at possibly putting the new water tower. Um, I recently witnessed people trying to play basketball on those delectative nets. What are we doing there? Do we have any updates on that?
Well, we are still moving forward with the water tank that's going to be placed at that, at that particular location. If there's people that are gathering there in groups, we'll need to be aware of that so we can do it if, if you're bringing that up. I'm not sure if you're related to the question.
No, I mean, it was a father and a daughter, so I'm not going to complain about that. I didn't check their IDs to make sure they live in the same household, but you know, I guess I could call Chris if we needed to. Um, point being is, are we putting the water tower there or are we going to fix it up?
We are looking at put at the water tower. That is the primary location for the tank.
Okay, then I would like to ask Parks and Rec to put a basketball net somewhere else.
I'm not sure if right now we want to be putting basketball nets up to get people gathering, but is there, is there another location where you're speaking of to put a net or?
You could even put it on the other side of the park in the, um, parking lot that was turned, that turns into the ice rink.
I'll make that recommendation to Parks. I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just, uh, piggyback on what Glenn said regarding 110 Detroit Street. Uh, this has gone on for two or three years trying to get this place into compliance. And not only has penalties from the planning commission failed, uh, but our legal branches seems to be stalled with fines and, uh, corrections that we've asked for. Uh, we gotta, there should be another avenue open to us as a last resort. Uh, eminent, eminent domain to condemn the place or possibly purchase the place ourselves. Uh, I don't, I, that place has got to go somehow. Something's got to be done with that. That's a terrible eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Your comments are noted. With that, we'll move on to the fire chief report and Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Um, we'll start off with some positive. Uh, by the weekend, I should be back at a hundred percent with my sick firefighters. Also, good news is we have not run a COVID or possible COVID patient since April 7th. Thought that was some good news. We've received a lot of questions and concerns regarding our burning policy for the city. Uh, people should just go to southlinefire.com or my Facebook page. We've updated the policy. I tried to break it down so it's a little more clear. Um, last Wednesday, I forgot to put this in my manager's report, uh, we were sent a fire truck down to Ann Arbor to do a drive-by with the Washtenaw County units at University of Michigan Hospital. And then they went on to St. Joe, who was really well received. And then finally, I just want to thank a couple of the businesses in town that have been very good to the South Line Fire Department and Police Department, uh, Little Caesars, Letgo's, MST, and then finally the local citizens that have been making us masks. It's been very helpful. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Dil, go ahead and then I'll come over to you, Councilmember Walton.
I just wanted to say thank you for that, um, participating in that drive-by. We have a couple, um, I have a couple of friends that are nurses there and they were really thrilled that, uh, South Lion participated.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that nobody does one, Ascension. Um, I, I heard maybe next Friday. Uh, I would like to go there also. That would, that would be the plan if they do, uh, next Friday.
That would be great.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say thank you for participating as an employee there at U of M. We really appreciate all the support that we are getting and I'm so happy to hear that your firefighters are on the mend.
Yeah, a hundred percent, hopefully by Saturday.
Wonderful.
Okay, if anyone else has anything for Chief Vogel, we're going to move over to the police chief report with Chief Sovik.
Yeah, just like, um, the fire department, we actually participated at, uh, Beaumont Hospital in Fermington Hills this past Friday, uh, in a drive-by and, uh, so that was good. We participated in that and just to thank the first responders that are in the trenches at this point. So we really appreciate their efforts and roast. Thank you. Um, been working in, in constant contact with Fire Chief Vogel since this thing first occurred. Um, I think he's actually moved a desk into his office so I can be close to him all the time. We've been constantly sharing information back and forth. I'm over there first thing in the morning and then throughout the day. And I know he's on conference calls. I'm on conference calls throughout the week. Trying to bring you guys, uh, up to speed and the latest and greatest. We're putting your information on Facebook. Um, and just implementing different changes and policies within our procedures to keep not only our, our, our employees safe, but citizens safe. So, um, we have a decontamination station kind of mock setup in our garage. Um, we have contingency plans for low staffing. Um, we have policies in place for low exposure and high exposure. So, um, between Chief and I, uh, Chief Vogel and I just sharing information and, um, communicating on a constant, uh, daily basis, uh, along with keeping, uh, the city manager up to speed on what we're doing too. Uh, it's been fairly effective. I think our communication has been good. And like I said, we're sharing as much information as we can on our Facebook page. And, um, uh, things the South Line Police Department are doing pretty good and we're just, we're just going to continue to roll with the changes when we need to. So if some new information comes out, we'll, we'll put it out. We'll implement new policies and contingency plans if they need to, but so far, I'm pretty pleased with the way that the, the South Line, the fire and the police are responding to this, um, pandemic. And if anything new comes out, um, I'll be sure to man, uh, mention it to city manager and on our Facebook page. So, thank you.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead and then I'm coming over to you, Councilmember Kittle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Chris, and, and to Vogel for being there for all of us. We really appreciate how diligent you guys are working and how diligent all of you have been. So appreciate you very much.
Essentially, that's my, my line too. I, especially the, uh, Facebook kind of communications that you guys are putting out. You're, you've been terrific cheerleaders for letting the community know what you guys are involved in, the things that you're, you're learning as you're having your little and things. And it's, it's really, I think people feel more comforted by the fact that there is an answer to this and we're, we're actually working in a way that makes good sense. So that's very helpful. Yeah.
Does anyone else have anything for Chief Sovik this evening? Alright, thanks a lot, Chief. Keep up the good work. With that, we will move on to old business number one this evening. The second reading of ordinance to amend the South Lion Code of Ordinances to update the changes or, excuse me, charges of malicious, malicious destruction of property and retail fraud to make them consistent with state law. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I just assume make the motion, um, to approve the second reading of the ordinance, moving sections fifty-eight dash one seventeen, section fifty-eight dash one eighteen and section fifty-eight dash one twenty-three to make.
Councilmember Walton? Okay, uh, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief Sovik, uh, just curious, how many months have our code of ordinances been out of phase with, uh, the state, uh, uh, changes of the law for that particular thing, malicious destruction of property? And did recent events from December and January, uh, push this along that we needed to change this?
No, actually it's been year, it's been years. We've had, we haven't had anything to do, uh, the recent changes in January, nothing to do with this. Um, it's just a, uh, it's just something to confine or consort with, um, state law. Um, but we're going to make it so we can keep the fines, um, local as opposed to go into the fifty-second district court. So, um, just kind of changes some wording. We've always been, um, it was actually easier to charge people, uh, you know, with, with these two crimes with the lower thresholds all these years, but now we're just going to up the, up the thresholds to, uh, comply with state law, but we're going to be able to charge them locally. So the fines will stay here within the city.
Oh, 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 okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business this evening. New business number one, waive fees for utility bills until June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the resolution to waive late fees for water and sewer bills that will be due on April thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, city administration shall not assess a ten percent penalty if the bills are paid in full by June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Or any bills that are not paid by the new date in paragraph one of the resolution, then the city administration will assess normal penalty penalties by using the new date as the due date for penalty purposes.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. New business number two this evening, South Lion Area Youth Assistance Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, we've been presented with the annual contract for the supportive services for the South Line Area Youth Assistance for the prevention of juvenile delinquency and neglect. It requests in a contribution for fiscal year of twenty, 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 twenty-one of thirteen thousand dollars. I've attached a proposed, proposed contract between the two entities. The recommendation is approve the proposed contract between the city of South Line and South Line Youth Assistance for fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-one.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Walton, I'm sorry, as you're in first and I'll come to you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I thought you were going to Councilmember Kennedy first. I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed agreement between the city of South Line and South Line Area Youth Assistance for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one to the contribution of thirteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you have any further discussion on that?
My hand was up to second the thing, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. This time we'll move on to the budget.
I just want to update, um, anybody who may be listening, most councilmembers are familiar with this. We just had our, for our budget session on April seventh. We're going to be making the adjustments based upon comments received at that particular meeting or develop further clarification on some items. And we expect it will be having, submitting a corrective budget to city council by the week of April twenty-seventh through May first. And the council, um, approves the budget no later than May twenty-sixth. That's all I have.
Does anyone else have anything for Paul on the budget this evening?
Yes.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Paul, are we going to get, uh, several little models, say, let us say models to choose from? Okay, of what, whether we'd like to go this way or that way or another way in between? Or are we just going to get one summation?
Uh, based upon the comments I received at the last meeting, I would be summarizing, uh, and looking at the minutes and then submitting or putting all those numbers together with, uh, finance director and the treasurer and giving you one, uh, new budget with a new budget.
and giving you one, uh, new budget with a new budget sheet based upon those discussions.
Okay, thank you, answered the question.
Okay, if we have nothing else on the budget this evening, we're gonna move on to the manager's report, and I'll kick it back to you, Paul.
As you know, the city staff continues to monitor the situation and act in a way to protect the health and our city employees and the public. Employees continue work or reduce work schedule at City Hall and their respective buildings. Um, please advise the public, as well as yourselves, to continue to work, look at our city website, or police, fire, and downtown Facebook pages and cable stations, and other locations throughout the city, to see the notifications as the public is to the changing conditions, and our office will continue to update you with additional information as it becomes pertinent. Uh, water and sewer rate analysis, we had a conference call today with, uh, Plant Moran, and we will be updating a document, which is a, uh, presentation that will be done for city council, we'll plan and get to that, hopefully we can get that to you by Friday, based upon the changes that were, uh, discussed today, and then we can work on scheduling, uh, a meeting while they, they would be making a presentation. Uh, the last item I wanted to bring up was, we did have correspondence today from our, um, regionally recycling authority that in fact, that GFL managers have, have informed, uh, that they would be starting the collection again for yard waste. Now, we are waiting for confirmation still from, um, from the general manager at R-SOC, uh, for this. I expect that we'll get that within the next couple days, we want to know exactly when they're gonna start up. From my understanding, they were collecting yard waste into late last week, and then they finally made the announcement that they were no longer gonna collect it, and then we got some notification today that they were gonna start again. But before we initiate this, we want to get something in writing, and as soon as I do, we'll be informing all of you as what, as well as the public. And that's all I have today, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
During the, um, uh, the budget workshop, uh, the city manager mentioned, uh, he had received an email from the school district interim superintendent about supporting financing for the school resource officer. Uh, we had, uh, a few council members had a chance to express their view on it, uh, unfortunately it was cut short because of the threatening weather, uh, that evening, and, uh, I wasn't able to provide my input on the subject, I'd like to do so now. Uh, regarding that school resource officer, I totally support having a school resource officer assigned to the schools to help ensure the safety of our students. I do, however, have a problem with the manner in which the school district wants to finance it. To begin, just a little background, the South Lion Community School District covers over eighty square miles, and includes six different cities and townships in three different counties. A few years ago, the South Lion Community School District unilaterally decided to reinstate the school resource officer, following some tragic events at other schools in the country. The school district then went out to their member communities and asked them for contributions to fund that decision. Some communities contributed, some did not. I believe that year, three of the six communities contributed. The Stool District repeated that same process again last year, and only two communities out of the six contributed. Each time, the shortage was funded from the school district's general fund. I believe that the cost of the school resource officer is an operating expense for the school district, no different than providing food service, janitorial service, maintenance on their facilities, and security for their facilities. As such, I believe the South Lion Community School District should accept that responsibility and fund it directly, as it does with those other entities, from the tax dollars it receives. Every taxpayer in the South Lion Community School District pays school taxes. When the school district comes to those cities and townships and requests them to contribute to the cost of the SRO, they are in essence asking the residents of those communities to pay twice. Once in the form of their school taxes, and secondly, by taking money from the budget of their individual or city or township to pay for it. In addition, four of the six communities in the school district are in Oakland County. Those taxpayers pay Oakland County taxes, a portion of which already funds the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. Asking them for additional funds from their budgets is again, taxing them twice for that support. The added additional cost is further exacerbated when some communities do not contribute, and even more money must be used from the school district's general fund to cover that shortage. As I said, I believe this is an operating expense for the South Lion Community School District, and they need to assume responsibility for addressing it. If they funded it through the collected school taxes that are paid by every taxpayer in the school district, then no community could opt out of contributing, and every community would pay their fair share. If the school district does not have the money in their general fund to cover this expense, then they need to develop a plan for increasing it. As an example, I realize the school district is currently proposing a ninety-eight million dollar bond to cover facilities improvements, et cetera, this year. Included in that proposal is a plan to purchase ten school buses. School buses are normally purchased from the general fund, however, by including bus, by including, uh, them in the bond, this allows the school district to save six hundred and fifty to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their general fund for other expenditures. Perhaps some of that savings could be used to fund the school resource officer. Again, I fully support the need for the school resource officer in keeping our students safe. However, I believe it is an operating expense for the South Lion School District, and they need to assume responsibility for addressing it. Once they establish an equitable means of funding it, and speaking is just one of seven on this board, I believe the City of South Lion would be pleased to bid on the contract to provide those services. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I, uh, Mr. Kennedy, uh, clearly summarized the arguments that I've made over the years, uh, regarding the SRO funding. Uh, those are exactly the arguments, if you go back in some of the tapes, uh, you'll see where I've made them, maybe not as articulately as, um, or exactly as Mr. Kennedy has made, but that's, those are exactly the arguments. This is an operating expense, this is a, an entity, uh, that has close to a sixty million dollar budget. I have offered many times to go over and assist them in finding the money, which I'm sure I could do, because it's not that difficult to find the funding for the SRO officer. Um, I think it's important to note that Northfield, uh, was never contacted, um, at some point to contribute into this fund. There are students, uh, from, uh, the far, uh, over on the east side of the district, over in Novi, not a lot of students, but Novi was not asked to contribute to this fund. There are students that are in, I believe it's Milford Village, uh, not a lot of students, but they were not asked to contribute. Green Oak doesn't contribute, they put the money towards their unpaid pension liabilities, that's what they do with the extra money. Uh, so, I think that the school district has been selective in who they have gone to. The money is there, there's no doubt in my mind that the money is there. And I think that this past shutdown of their schools, if they are proper stewards of the taxpayers' money, they will have found the money, uh, due to the fact that the swimming pool is not being heated, uh, gasoline in the buses is not being used, uh, heating in most of the schools, in fact, I'd like to know if the boilers have been turned off. Uh, so the, the, just the electricity savings alone, uh, they should be able to squirrel away the money to make up the difference for, uh, for South Lion and, um, and, and who else, and whoever else. Um, additionally, um, uh, Melissa Baker, uh, did not her, turn in her resignation until after the school budget was approved. So that means that the school district approved her salary, uh, which was, oh, well over a hundred thousand with benefits. The interim school manager, uh, superintendent that they've hired is not at her salary, it's at a reduced amount, healthy, but it's reduced, um, and is not getting any benefits, so there's an additional source that they could be squirreling away, uh, this money, and they'd be fine. Um, I will not, the only thing that I disagree with, um, Mr. Kennedy on, is I do not, under any circumstances-
I've seen it on, and I just wondered.
Support the-
Councilmember Kurtzwell, I'm sorry to interrupt you, uh, Lisa, is there any way we could get, thank you, we needed a mute on, on the newest member of the meeting. I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, please go ahead and, and, uh, continue.
No, that's okay, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for your, um, courtesy. Um, uh, the only point that I disagree with, um, Mr. Kennedy on, and, and it's, it's an issue just to disagree, it's not an issue to get angry at or blow up at somebody for. Um, I, uh, do not agree that the South Lion Police Department should be bidding on that contract at all. Uh, that is the jurisdiction of the schools, the schools have chosen the, um, Oakland County Sheriff's Department. I'm paying for part of the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. City of South Lion cannot compete, uh, with the bid of the Oakland County Sheriff, and, uh, I think that they're probably gonna stay with the Oakland County Sheriff, everybody seems to be very happy with it. And with respect to Lion Township, I think it's important to understand that Lion Township has a very unique position with respect to their arrangement with the school. And that is, is that they pay into this, uh, this is my understanding, they pay into this because they use, and I don't know what the cost is, I don't know what the arrangement is, but they use that school officer for their patrols in the summer to, um, give, uh, vacation leave for uh, the officers that are taking vacations over there at the substation. So Lion Township's arrangement that they have benefits them because there is an officer being used for their township in the summertime. And I would find it interesting, in fact, maybe I'll call over there this week and talk with Patty, and see if the school district has refunded them part of their SRO money for, uh, an SRO officer that hasn't been used since March. That would be something I would also think that the school district has an obligation to do, is if that SRO officer is not being used to refund those communities who paid into it, um, a reimbursement of that cost, but that's just a different argument for a different thing. But thank you, Mr. Kennedy, uh, good summation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate what I had said at our budget meeting, that essentially that my, my misgiving with the idea of the SRO and the schools making requests for us to donate to it were simply a matter of equity. The idea of having the school resource officer seems perfectly reasonable to me. The, uh, the notion of how it's funded is completely arbitrary, and the only way that it becomes, uh, equal for every community that's being represented in that school district is if the schools are the ones that put the mileage on their budget, and they pay for it accordingly. Uh, just as an aside, I do think that it would be helpful if South Lion PD could get an opportunity to bid on that contract, and I think that the schools would end up actually having superior coverage simply because of the proximity of the South Lions Police Department being the agency of the local high school, that certainly doesn't help the, uh, the people out at east. I think that that arrangement is probably, makes more sense, but certainly this South Lion High School, I think, could end up gaining benefit of much quicker response times, and much more integrated into this, the local community, uh, with being able to infiltrate some of the bad actors and, um, and being able to take care of that part of the business. That's all I have, thank you very much, though.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, as long as, does anyone else have anything, before I go back to Councilmember Kennedy? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Just, uh, one more little piece of information, you know, the City of South Lion funded that, uh, that SRO officer for about ten years directly out of its budget prior to the construction of South Lion East, we had officers at the high school, at the middle schools, et cetera, and it came out of the South Lion budget. We just don't have that kind of operating margin and, uh, and resources to do that. So that was, that ended about two thousand, eh, just about the time of the Great Recession there, and, uh, it kind of fell into disuse for about, uh, like I said, almost ten years until things took place, uh, in other areas of the country, so. Uh, we have done our part without a doubt in that first, uh, ten years, starting back around two thousand, I think it was, if memory serves, that, uh, we should hold of that cost on our own to help the school district. That's it.
Anyone else, uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Keep forgetting to unmute, um, uh, in addition to what Councilman Kennedy said, is that, um, I've really spent a lot of time looking at this issue, and basically what happened, and I happen to know uh, police officers in the county that are not, uh, county sheriffs, uh, that are actually police officers, they are the ones that educated me on why, um, and this was their opinion, and there may have been some basis for it, is that back in the old days, uh, police departments, in order uh, patrolling a school was an additional opportunity to increase the police force, because that was the justification. You had an ability to gain more police officers by agreeing to security in the schools, and the schools, of course, at that time, uh, were amenable to it because, or whatever, it wasn't coming out of their budget. But the, uh, recently with the issues with the schools, and that was a business model. Uh, that was a business model that was clearly used, clearly instructed, clearly told to people that were moving into management into, um, law enforcement, that it's a good thing to, uh, get in and patrol the schools because it assists you in your numbers, uh, for police officers. That was a business model. Then what happened was, we started with the school issues, and the Oakland County Sheriff, um, became very involved in providing an alternative to local police, and the county was beginning to set up the training, set up everything that is needed. Um, and I do want to let you know that Oakland County right now leads the country in training and preparation of SRO officers. Uh, they are becoming the standard in the country, they are becoming the, the model of how you train law enforcement for the schools. Uh, their program that the Oakland County Sheriff has is, in conjunction with the Michigan State Police is absolutely phenomenal, I mean, those guys go through a training program, and when an SRO officer is selected for a school, that SRO officer has to interview. Those, those SRO officers are interviewed, screened, trained, they, um, all of that, so it's not just we're, we're plugging somebody in from the local force anymore, it's a highly trained paramilitary, um, enforcement agency that's going into these schools now, the times have changed, I mean, the times have really, really changed. So, uh, I'd just like to add that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have anyone else to add to, uh, we are on the manager's report here? Okay, great. We will reopen the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and, uh, respect the two-minute time limit.
Hey, Dan?
Yep.
You know what, I hate to do that, but I did want to end up adding that, uh, manager's report thing, if you remember our last meeting, we had the, uh, for heaven's sakes, we had the, the little conversation about uh, go on it, you know what, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna have to skip it. We had a little, I know how silly that sounds, we had a little blurb in there, and I, I just, I had forgotten about bringing it up, but it's kind of too cumbersome to get into now, so, thanks.
All right, well, uh, yeah, make sure to make a note of it if, when it comes back to you, and we'll get to it. Um, with that, we will reopen the floor for public comment, if anyone, uh, is capable of video that would have a comment, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. Did we have anyone that doesn't have video that would like to speak in public comment, please state your name and address?
Yes, this is, uh, Jim Hamady, uh, eleven eighty-nine Horseshoe Drive. Uh, I want to thank the, uh, city council, uh, and staff, uh, for enabling this, uh, Zoom, um, uh, meeting for the city council where we, the public, can, uh, still attend, I think it's a very good, uh, feature to continue to use moving forward for a lot of the meetings, and I think, uh, potentially, uh, even during, when, when the council reconvenes- And I think, uh, potentially, uh, even during, when, when the council reconvenes, um, at City Hall, it could potentially be used as well, um, to stream live meetings until the video system is upgraded. I'd also like to encourage, uh, so to potentially stream the Zoom meeting on, uh, Facebook to the public.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Did we have anyone else that was out there without video capabilities and would like to speak for public comment this evening? Lisa, what are you, Lisa Deaton, excuse me, City Plurk Deaton. Uh, we do have someone in with audio. I don't know if they're trying to speak.
Um, I do not know. They have the video camera turned off, but their microphone is on. They haven't spoke.
Okay, well, with that, as long as there's no, uh, no one jumping out, uh, we will close our public comment and we'll move on to council comments this evening. And we'll start with Councilmember Dill this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a couple things, um, as I'm sure it is for everybody. Uh, my heart's just been breaking watching our businesses, um, struggle right now. And, uh, you know, my heart really goes out to them. But I just wanted to call out and thank a few businesses that I've seen that even though they're struggling are still working to help our community and each other. Um, Elechos, everybody has seen the amazing, uh, work that they're doing to feed first responders and medical, uh, personnel. It's unbelievable to see what they're doing. Then there's, uh, there was Grand Trunk giving out free, uh, masks today to anybody who asked. They were making masks and putting them out for anybody to come get and they wouldn't take any money for them. Um, Coral Sash was, uh, buying gift certificates from other local businesses and then giving them away on, um, on Instagram, which was really neat. Um, South Lion Bike, um, it was helping people with bike repairs, even though, you know, at a safe distance, um, for free and just helping them out. And there's just, uh, there's a ton of other examples and it just, it really touches me that our, even though these businesses are struggling, they're still trying to help us and they're trying to help, um, each other. And I just really want us as a council to remember this when things go back to normal. And I really hope that the community does their best to shop local, um, you know, as soon as things get back and, and even when they can now because, um, they really need our support, um, and, and they definitely deserve it. And I also wanted to thank all of our residents that I see, um, I see on Facebook constantly trying to help each other out, people offering to go grocery shopping, people offering to make masks for at cost or for free and giving them out to people, people making sanitizers. Um, it's just, it's a, just really great to see how much people are pulling together. Um, and I just wanted to thank our grocery store workers, our food service workers. Um, all these people are putting themselves at risk so that we can stay fed and, and stay home. And I just, uh, you know, and I want to, I thank our resident tour medical professionals. And I just can't imagine how difficult this is, um, for, for you. I, I know Councilmember Walton, same thing. I can't imagine how difficult it is and I just really appreciate it. And I just really want to urge patience and caution and please, please do the social distancing and hang in there and we're gonna get through this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. We will go to, uh, sorry, it's a junk, it's a mixed bag here of where everyone is. Uh, we'll go to Councilmember Kibble next.
Uh, I, I agree a lot with what Lisa had said. I, I would like to add too, I'd like to thank all the local people that are patronizing the local residents that are still delivering carryout. Um, I, I can't help but think that they're very, very appreciative of people and the, their downsized staff working and busy and, uh, not, when you saw some of the big, big people in town, the hotel and places like that, just saying that they couldn't sustain the, the if and when they're going to see an awful lot of traffic there. Uh, but some of these other guys have hung tough and they're really helping families get a little bit of variety in their life and get out to be able to at least take a drive to a restaurant to pick up some takeout. So I think that that's terrific. And I also agree with Lisa in that the, anytime I'm shopping around, I want, I make sure that I go out of my way to thank them for what they're doing for this community to keep the stack, the shelf stacked and, um, making sure that everybody has the ability to, to sustain themselves. So I think that they, they all seem to be quite appreciative of that as well. Uh, pretty much that's all I have though. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight I just want to let everyone know that, uh, Eight Mile Road is going to be closed for resurfacing between Pontiac Trail and Tower Road, starting a week from today on Monday. Uh, it's gonna take about two weeks to do the work. Uh, work's gonna be performed by the Washtenaw County Road Commission. I know it's gonna be a little inconvenient, but, uh, it's a little short-term pain for a long-term gain, uh, I guess is the best way to put it. Other than that, uh, I want, uh, and hope everyone stays safe and stays healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kurtschel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say that I've been hearing incredible comments from people in the town complimenting council, all of us, um, for the incredible work that they, uh, see us out there doing, whether it's walking in the neighborhoods and waving to people, giving a sense of everything's gonna be okay, to council members that are purchasing items either through a gift card or at a local restaurant. Uh, I am getting incredible, incredible kudos for this team that is moving forward, adjusting to the circumstances, not panicking, uh, being methodical about what we're doing and, um, giving the residents in this town a sense of, I feel good that I live in South Lion. Look at this incredible council and department heads that are going to get us through this and are getting us through it. So I wanted to pass that off to council because I think it's important that we know what the community is saying and it's all extremely positive. Uh, last, I'm an optimist, we're gonna get through this, everybody. We're going to get through this. We're gonna get through this with some great stories and there will come a time when we will be able to hug and shake hands. Maybe not this month, maybe not this year, but we will be able to get back to the kind of life that we've led here in South Lion. And I kind of want to close with, I don't have it exactly because I didn't record it, but it went something like this. You know, there will be a time when we will meet our family again. There will be a time when we will meet our friends again. And there will be a time to all of you that we will meet again. Just remember that, we will meet again. And I'm plagiarizing Queen Elizabeth with her talks several weeks ago. It was at the end. We will meet again. Good night, everybody. God bless you and I'll see you out with the wave.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtschel and Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have just a few things to say tonight, too. I want to throw out a little shout out to a new Hudson resident who graduated from South Lion, Connor McCuster, who is making ear savers for the masks that the healthcare and first responders have to wear. It's really a great thing to not have those little ties around your ears because boy do they hurt after eight or nine hours. Uh, the other thing I want to say is in these times, remember that Active Faith is handing out food to many residents. They're getting a little bit busier, they're not checking as much as closely, there's not an approval process. If you need help, reach out to Active Faith, but if you have some extra money, you might want to toss them a little donation. You can mail it to 401 Washington Street, South Lion. They would be much appreciated by them. And the last thing I want to say tonight is that sometimes we're tested not to show our weaknesses, but to discover our own strengths. So everybody, keep that in mind. We're gonna get through this as everyone has said, but just make sure you find your strength in this time. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. And I, I'll be brief, but I want to echo, uh, some of our comments. What? Oh, Carl, I'm sorry, Carl. Councilmember Richards, please go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'll go as fast as I can. Uh, first of all, I want to make mention, oh, I, first of all, I got a question, Mr. Mayor. My phone was breaking up from time to time. Did we go through the reappointments on the consent agenda? I didn't hear it.
It was on the consent agenda.
Okay, I, it didn't come through on my phone. Okay, uh, first, first up, I want to say about the cemetery. Uh, I'm, was glad to see the garden area all cleaned off, uh, last week, Monday or Tuesday. Uh, the DPW and however they managed it, they got all the cleanup done early this year and it looks great. Uh, they really did a beautiful job. Uh, next item, uh, as Councilman Walton mentioned about Active Faith, uh, they're working overtime and Active Faith and, uh, servicing a lot of people, okay? And, uh, they need our prayers and, and more volunteers if possible. Uh, now, the annual Creek Cleanup that would have been scheduled for the 25th of this month in conjunction with the Tube Mill has been canceled at this time. Hopefully we can reinstitute it at a later date in the spring. Uh, we all look forward to that experience. Uh, I'm very glad to see Peoples Express, uh, lowering the fees, okay? At this time, making it possible for a lot of people like myself to be able to use their service and go to places like Walmart and, uh, Ascension in Novi. Uh, also, I want to mention the flooded area that we had at, near the, uh, Hidden Creek subdivision. Uh, Mr. Ledbetter was out there yesterday and he and I were on the phone when the water broke loose and the DPW was out there and saved the day. Uh, this was on a Saturday and, uh, I believe, and, uh, uh, Sayre Drain had plugged up from the recent rainstorm we had previously during the week. And, uh, they, they broke it up and it, and the surge of the water sent the water all the way across, uh, Nine Mile and Dixboro Road. It was terrific. Um, anyway, the problem has resolved itself and it's back to normal, but was, it still needs some monitoring in the future. Uh, I'm sorry, we didn't, in the last, uh, budget meeting, we were cut short, as Glenn had mentioned, uh, hopefully, we didn't get to our summations on, on our budget recommendations, but hopefully that'll all be resolved in the next two weeks, uh, by our contacts with Paul. And finally, uh, I want to make mention of, I hope that, as some scientists have predicted that we could have a second wave of a mutated virus after this cor- coronavirus seems to subside and flatten out, there's a possibility of a mutated virus coming again and hitting us. I hope this does not happen, but it has been, uh, suggested by scientists that are looking at it at this time. And with that, I'll close, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards, and my apologies for nearly skipping you. Um, but there is a positive note out of it. Um, I do want to quickly, as part of my comments this evening, uh, go through and thank those that were reappointed this evening. Uh, Erin Kopkowski for Planning Commission, Mike Joseph for Planning Commission, Philip Wiper for Zoning Board of Appeals, Brian Dunn, Zoning Board of Appeals, Philip Wiper, Historical Commission, Larry Ledbetter, Historical Commission, Jeff Heinonen, DDA Board, Mark Childs on the DVD DA Board, Amber King on the Cable, Cable Commission, Rich Perry on the Cable Commission and Steve Kaukinen on the Cable Commission. Thank you to you all. Um, our volunteers are a major, major player in our community and we thank you all, um, for, for doing that. I will also quickly just echo some of the, uh, thoughts that we were all sharing earlier. Uh, I think it's important that we get that out so folks can hear it. Uh, I just wanted to thank everyone at Southland Police Department, Southland Fire Department, our DPW, Wastewater, and of, of course, our folks at Administration at City Hall, uh, all of our residents that are considered essential in working, uh, in any profession out there, uh, in, in helping us all get through this. Uh, this is a very proud community and we're all very proud of you. So, uh, with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn this evening. Uh, Councilmember Kurtschel, go ahead.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Have a great night, all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great meeting.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
For our next after-party.
No doubt. Stay safe, everyone. Good seeing you guys.
Good night.